All right. Hello and welcome. I would like to call the July 11th meeting of the Fargo Board of Education meeting to order. This is the annual reorganization of the board. Please stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. As it is our annual reorganization meeting, I will now recite our land acknowledgement statement. Fargo Public Schools respectfully acknowledges that we gather on the lands of the Ochete Sha'kowee, who are the Dakota, Lakota, and Nokota people, and the Ahni Shenabe people of this area. I will now entertain a motion for approval of our agenda. Jim?
I'll move adoption of the agenda with the addition of the HR addendum to be added to the consent agenda under item 8B.
Second. Okay. Moved by Jim, seconded by Namal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is the recognition of audience. At this time, the board will hear comments from the public. We ask that each speaker who has signed up to address the board state their name and home school district for the record. Speakers must remain from using, refrain from using this forum to criticize or complain about a specific employee or student by name. Vulgar or profane language will not be tolerated. The board is interested in your comments and will listen carefully but is not obligated to respond to or debate issues in this forum. This evening, three speakers have signed up to address the board. Each speaker will be allotted a maximum of three minutes. Upon conclusion of the allotted time, a chime will sound and the speaker is asked to conclude. If necessary, a final chime will sound 15 seconds later, signifying the end of the speaker's time at the podium. I will now call our first speaker to the podium, which is Devin Satchinsky. Welcome.
Because I have to breeze across several memos, I actually wrote down what I'm going to say You are not serious people. Over the last several months, you've ran to the legislature, whose laws you refuse to follow, to plead for more money, yet magically have a surplus in the budget that you have instructed Jackie to invest with zero stated direction. This certainly is not being transparent with the taxpayers' money. You want to build a special classroom that basically equates to solitary confinement for some of the special ed kids. This certainly is not inclusive for all students. You bend over backwards for anyone who will suck up to you while outright ignoring parents that plead with you to do something about the violence and bullying. I've never seen admin come out to a parent in the audience about an issue until last meeting, let alone Jim running to catch up to that parent to exchange phone numbers after the meeting. This certainly is not a way to be leaders in the community. You state that the district will follow "organiz-" quote, organizational truths. What is an organizational truth versus reality you continue to hide from? This certainly will not prevent the misinformation you are so worried about. You speak of wanting justice and equality, yet you also state that you need to hire based on race to, quote, "provide significant value to students of color, white students, and our community," end quote. This certainly does not treat everyone equally when you specifically call out students by their skin color. We all have red blood in our veins, but you seem to forget that just to shoehorn political talking points into district policy to thumb your nose at the state. You are not leaders, and I say again, you are not serious people.
Thank you, Devin. Our next speaker this evening is Paul Moore. Welcome, Paul.
My name is Paul Moore. I live in North Fargo. First, as far as education, I'd like to encourage everybody to stop by the 4H exhibits out at the Red River Valley Fair. So regarding memos 12 and 13, I want to focus on academics. The memos look like, to me, like the topic of the day. I want you to ask these questions to yourselves. How do these memos increase academic scores? How do the memos stop bullying? Not just the current flavor of bullying, but the bullying that has been going on since we were all in school. It's still there. Ask the parents of the nerdy kids. How do these memos actually help you find actual root causes for the topics that they, you want to address? How do you spend time creating the memos that don't answer the questions about academics? Memo 13. I wanted to look up what educational justice meant, and I looked it up. I found this from North Carolina. Educational justice involves schools, communities, that work to provide equitable and adequate distribution of highly qualified teachers who can provide quality instruction to ensure that all students graduate high school-ready for career or college. That sounds pretty good. So when I tried to look the same thing up for Fargo Public Schools, I was directed to diversity, inclusion, and equity statement. At Fargo Public Schools, we will honor the uniqueness of the individual, embrace diverse backgrounds, and prepare students as agents of multicultural society. To me, that's not quite as strong as what North Carolina decided to put out. So how does the diversity, equity, and inclusion happen to get the grades up? The grades that our own documentation show that we're failing. And I printed off a graph here that you can look at sometime, and it sure is in there. Basically, you look at these percentages, and if these were percentages based the same as grade levels are, we'd all be getting Fs. Memo 12, it seems like we just want more time off. When I say that, I only mean certain people, not others. For example, on Veterans Day of 2020, on that no-school day, there were girls swimming, football, and volleyball. These things require students and staff, so how come they don't get the day off? Then it's all about learning about the holidays. In the memo, you give a paragraph to each of the proposed new holidays, but there are no paragraphs about the current list of holidays and what they mean. So why aren't there paragraphs? Or do we just know enough about those things? For example, you could have written about Christmas, the annual festival of the Christian Church that commemorates the birth of Jesus, a man who Christians believe is the Son of God, whose life, death, and resurrection, as reported in the New Testament of the Bible, are the basis of the Christian religion. Be some good information to also put in there, considering we put information about the others. Also, assuming teachers will need to make up their professional days, how do teachers feel about you extending their calendar by two days? Plus the extra day that everyone has to go to make the minimum contact days.
Thank you, Paul. Our final speaker this evening is Matt Kozak. Welcome.
What's passing out now is just a handout of kind of what I'm talking about. I'm sure you guys have seen these because these are all articles from the forum in the last two years. First, happy anniversary to one-year anniversary. Katie said that earlier, so happy one-year anniversary to you guys. In the last two school years, five adults have had inappropriate relationships with students. Four of them at the same school. The article that I'm showing you now, that you guys have now, are all from Fargo's, they're all about staff at Fargo South from the last two school years. It's gotten progressively worse. The first one was inappropriate con- or communication. Second was inappropriate conduct. Third one was ongoing relationship, which had actions happening at school grounds. And the last one, just recently, was sexual assault. I was here in January and mentioned that before the last one, I had said that there was, there was going on. At the current rate, we'd have more before the next school year. I had my, someone rolled their eyes at me, didn't pay attention, and it, some of you guys were looking, some of you guys were looking down at your phone, no big deal. It didn't seem like it was that big of a deal. No action was taken, nothing was done. I did receive communication from the leader of the district. I know, I can't say their, say their name, but the person who leads the district sent communication saying that there's no training plan to be done. There's a quote on that handout, too. No training going to be done for the 23-24 school year. Not even like a statement to say, hey, maybe you shouldn't have inappropriate relationships with kids. Not that all teachers aren't going to do that. Not all teachers are going to do it, but four at one school in two years? What is the statistical odds of that? That's insane. Four at one school in two years. Couple, couple months ago, there was the, the controversial law that was passed, and you had a bunch of people here, public comment was about an hour. People were talking about it. Someone in this room, at one of these, at this table, went and did a training before that, before Dr. Gandhi, the leader of the thing, had even said his opinion to you guys. They did a training to go to the district at Discovery Middle School to talk and explain the district's policies so teachers wouldn't have to worry about it, so that they were clear on it. So it's possible to do quick trainings like that, or at least have a little bit of communication to explain like, hey, you shouldn't, this is what we're doing, this is our stance. How many more students? It's an election year for some of you guys if you're going to run again. I mean, how many are you okay with? Do we have, at this rate, it'll be another, another two this school year? That's two, two, two. You had one at a middle school, which, I mean, it's, that's still there, but like, it's just weird that four, four adults employed by the school district. One school, two years. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gross will now preside over the meeting for the reorganization of the Fargo Board of Education for the 2022-2023 school year. Dr. Gross?
Well, thank you very much. We will move to the next item on our agenda, which is the canvassing committee report. I just want to draw your attention to memo number seven, and I believe, Mr. Johnson, you are the chair of that committee, and do you have a report to share?
Yes, I surely do. Thank you. And first of all, I would like to thank both Robin and Nikki, who served on the committee as well. For the office of president, we've had two individuals indicate their interest, Melissa and Nikki. Do you want me to proceed because it'll change after this election? So I'd like to stop there and hold the presidential election.
That sounds terrific. With that being said, I will then slide down to the next agenda item, which is the election of officers. And the first officer that we will elect will be the officer of president. Like was shared in memo seven and by Mr. Johnson, both Melissa Berkland and Nikki Gulickson have agreed to put their names forward for president. At your table, there is a ballot. Before you, though, fill that out, I would like to open up to the floor to see if there are any additional nominations for the officer of president. For a second time, I'd like to open up to the floor if there are any additional nominations for the officer of president. And finally, for the third time, I'd like to open up to the floor if there are any additional nominations for the officer of president. Seeing none, again, at your spot, there is a ballot. If you would please take a few moments to put your vote down for that office. I believe Tara and Anne Marie then will collect those ballots. They will do a quick tabulation, and in a minute, we will share the results. So, thank you. Based upon the votes that were tabulated, Melissa Berkland will be the president for the 23-24 school board.
Moving on to item 6B2. Jim, do you want to read the now changed results for vice president?
Absolutely. And behalf, on behalf of the canvassing committee, I do want to thank all of the board members who were willing to serve this year. It's certainly an additional duty that you get compensated with the thanks of the rest of us. Based upon the election of the president, the board members who are on the ballot for vice president from the nominating committee are Katie, Namal, Seth, and Nikki.
And before we vote, I'd like to open the floor to nominations for the officer of vice president. For a second time, any nominations from the floor for vice president? And third, all right, seeing none, please fill out your ballots. So according to Robert's Rules of Order and our own governing policies, officers of the board need to be elected by a majority, meaning that one person has to receive at least five votes. And after that ballot, there were no winners, so we, we didn't get a majority. So will we get new ballots? Okay, so we will. So, I get prepared. So we're going to try again and see if we can get one person to five votes for our majority.
Jim? Can I bow out just to make this easier?
If you want to. It just has to be recognized.
Okay. Do you want to? Sure. Okay, yep, Nikki?
If I may, I'd like to help make this process just a little bit easier, and I will resend my name from the VP position, just to try to smooth things out.
Okay. Well, thank you, Nikki. So everybody can cross Nikki out?
Can I cross my name out, too?
You would like to do the same thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're going to be crossing out from our ballots both Nikki Gulickson and And then, of course, I'm no longer an option, too. So, thank you. Congratulations to Seth Holden, who will be serving as our 23-24 vice president, and thank you so much to everybody who threw in their name. All right, so with that, we can move on to seven reports, and it looks like Grant's here, so we're going to hear from Grant for the FEA report. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa, and congratulations on your election. I think we have work to do together, so I'm hoping we can find the ways to do that, and I'm optimistic that we'll be able to. If you haven't had a chance, just before this meeting, I sent an email to board members, and I would just ask that you have, have read through that before you approve the consent agenda. A couple of specific comments on memo number 12. That intends to make some changes to the calendar process at the request of administration to EL 14. And I believe FEA leaders that have come before me have advocated for changes to EL 14, and that discussion never made it to the full board level. So while changes are being made tonight, the FEA will reaffirm our belief that the calendar committee should be trusted and inspired to create a calendar that's suitable for teachers and parents and administrators, and ultimately, the students and larger community that we serve. The current list of restrictions that are within EL 14 provides a command and control approach to create in the calendar. And so by removing the entirety of Section 2 would be an appropriate way to demonstrate respect to the calendar committee and to allow for an increase in creativity and collaboration amongst stakeholders who serve on that committee. Memo number 10, the FEA may have some additional work to do here to fully understand what's at play with memo number 10, but upon initial look, it appears to skirt the teacher contract, and that was a concern. FEA leadership therefore recommends that the board look very closely at this memo before approving it in the consent agenda. As for negotiations, after my last FEA report, I was told at a negotiations meeting that other members of this board felt my comments were damaging and inappropriate. Part of the rationale for that seemed to be that some board members were uncomfortable with how much more public comments are at a board meeting than in a negotiations committee meeting. I was surprised to hear this concern, as I had informed the president at the time, prior to my remarks that I would be speaking about negotiations. I would have expected, if speaking about negotiations is out of line, that the president would have informed me of that at that time. It was also alarming to me that no board member reached out to me following the comments. None of you reached out to have me explain where the comments were coming from or the amount of time and effort that had gone into preparing those comments, trying to ensure that they were factual and trying to ensure that the tone was appropriate. Instead, it seems you talked about me without me in a closed session and allowed either your own or others' preconceived notions of me and the teachers I represent to overshadow the sentiment that I was trying to share. While I might disagree with the perspective that you all hearing about negotiations from the person who represents the majority of teachers is somehow inappropriate or damaging to the process, I nonetheless chose to not speak at the following board meeting. It was just one day later that we would meet for negotiations, and I certainly didn't want anything that I would say to be used as a reason to not continue negotiations if progress could be made. I'll save you a full recap of that three-page memo that the FEA shared with board members following that meeting, which detailed how two-thirds of teachers were unable to accept the board's terms. The board did not accept FEA's requests in that memo to continue negotiations on salary and/or the teacher workload and has not responded to that memo to date. As such, the board has allowed a state-imposed deadline to cut off discussions As such, the Board has allowed a state-imposed deadline to cut off discussions prior to being deadlocked on all remaining topics, since both the Board and the FEA have stated and agreed that additional progress could have been made on the topic of salary. This lack of continued collaboration is deeply discouraging to teachers, teachers who stand ready to find middle ground for a mutually agreeable contract. Nonetheless, we're grateful that our contract provides a process for local individuals to help work toward that middle ground, and we anticipate mediation being helpful to re-centering the conversations around addressing the needs teachers have shared with the Board. I imagine that your anticipated action item coming out of executive session tonight will be to declare the person you have selected as your mediator. The FEA is also working to select a mediator, and we'll be able to share that selection with you and the public when it becomes known. The FEA will relentlessly pursue the best possible workplace conditions for the staff of Fargo Public Schools, because we know that results in even better learning environments for our students. I want to leave you tonight with some final thoughts that come from the book the district leaders are reading this summer called Trust and Inspire. On page 45, the author describes a job interview process for a professor. The candidate was told that he would have expenses reimbursed, but when it came time to be reimbursed, the professor could not get his flight covered, because he only had a digital airline ticket and not a physical copy, which that university system required for reimbursement. The author writes about this, saying, "The school sent mixed messages. Their behavior on the visit was enthusiastically saying that 'we want and need you, and this is a good place for you,' but their inability to be flexible on the ticket reimbursement shouted 'we don't trust you.'" This institutionalized lack of trust caused them to not only lose a great prospective professor, but also damage their reputation among their current faculty as tales of this story spread. I think we can learn something from that story. The FEA remains open to meeting ahead of any mediation session to try to make progress that we can make on the topic of salary and/or the topic of teacher assignment. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Next, if Dr. Gandhi is with us, and he has a report, we'd like to hear from you.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe Dr. Gross will be giving the assignment on my behalf.
Thank you very much. One thing that we did want to bring to your attention is a name change in one of the programs that we have within our system. As we look at our, what was called our Indian Education Program, will be called our Native American Program moving forward, and we just wanted to bring that to the Board for your information. That has been something that both the leaders in our district in that area, plus the Parent Committee, have come to agreement on, and that is a movement that they want to do collectively. So we just wanted to share that with you tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Gross. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, I would look for a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Thanks, Dr. Newman. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Two seconds. All right, I'll say, motion by Dr. Newman, seconded by Seth. All in favor? Please, or, yes, would you like to discuss?
We have an HR addendum included as well.
Okay, so.
Sorry, can I? So I would make a motion for approval of the consent agenda with the addition of the HR addendum at our desk.
Thank you.
And second.
Great, thank you.
Re-second.
All right, moved with the HR addendum by Dr. Newman and seconded by Seth. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Yes.
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 Thank you. All right, moving on to Business 9A, the first up is the Building Authority Membership. Yes, Jim?
Well, seeing that Jackie is not here and Rupak is remote, I'll at least introduce this and make a motion. Every year at the reorganization meeting, we also have to put forward a slate of candidates for the Fargo School District Building Authority to consider for its membership under the bylaws of that Fargo District Building Authority. We can nominate anywhere from nine to 11 members. Historically, the 11 members have been the nine School Board members and our Superintendent and our Business Manager, but we changed it to have nine to 11 in case there was any particular individual that was unwilling to serve. We certainly need nine, but we don't need all of us, so this is an opportunity for Board members to elect not to have your name put forward for the Building Authority meeting that's going to be following this one, if that makes sense. And with that, I'll make a motion that we approve all nine acting Board members, Superintendent Dr. Gandhi, Business Manager Jackie Gap, for a membership on the Fargo School District Building Authority Board for the following year.
I will second that, please.
Thank you, Robin. Moved by Jim and seconded by Robin. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, Anne Marie, would you like to call the roll?
Christensen.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Day.
Yes.
Gulickson.
Yes.
Holden.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Berklin. Yes. All right, thank you, motion passes. Moving on to Item 2 under our business agenda, EL 14 Changes. This was presented to us in memo number 12, and Dr. Gandhi, did you want to discuss anything about the memo that was provided to the Board?
Sure. I think as the memo outlines, administration had noticed that there wasn't a consistent practice in the recognition of all federal. So we are proposing a change to EL 14 effective, not this upcoming school year, but effective June 1st of 2024, to change EL 14 so then we at least have a consistent practice of district closure on all federal holidays. This was done, sun rising, June 1st, 2024, so we do not have to change an approved calendar for the 2324 school year. This would require reconvening, convening the Calendar Committee for the 2320, or, and following the new parameters, should the Board decide to take this action.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Robin?
I'd like to move that we approve the changes to EL 14 as included in memo number 12 to be enacted on June 1st, 2024.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Namal. Motion by Robin, seconded by Namal. Any discussion? Yes, Katie?
I was wondering if there could give some insight into why we wouldn't wait until June 1st, 2025, and I'm also curious to know if the Board has previously, like, is there a history of doing this, where Calendar Committee meets, it gets approved, and then we go back and they have to reconvene later? So those are my concerns with it. I have absolutely no problem with taking, with this update. I just don't like that it's being done after a committee already went through that process.
All right, and Bob, since you chair the committee, maybe you can shed some light on that?
So there has been a history of the calendar going back to a Calendar Committee for revision, and that was based upon the identification of an error in the, actually, the development of the calendar on days that we could not be in session. So a calendar was approved, it was asked to go back to the committee, the committee did reconvene, and we brought that back to the Board for, again, approval. So we have done that in the past. As we look at changing next year's calendar, I think one of the concern is that families may have already made plans, and if now we go back with a very short amount of time for them, they may then have to either readjust or miss school or some other components to that. In addition to that, based upon what we would make in EL 14, some of the changes, we would need to change some of the non-instructional days as well, and there are some provisions in the contract that connect directly to that. So there are many reasons why a change for next year's calendar would be problematic, but in a year out, we would be able to reconvene that committee and share that.
Sure, I think so. My question was, why not wait until the following year, because we have two calendars that have already been made? So was that discussed, like, going and, like, bringing this forward to the Calendar Committee of the 2526 school year?
I believe really, as we had conversations around this topic at Cabinet and with other leaders, we thought, as we know, that we are not celebrating or honoring all federal holidays. We wanted to do it as soon as possible, but in a way that would not negatively impact families.
Okay, thanks for that explanation.
Yes, Anne Marie?
Just want to give one more example, where we did instruct the Calendar Committee to go back in recent years. If you recall, there was one year where we had to call off school for a couple of buildings because it was so hot, and at that time, the Board then instructed the Calendar Committee to come back together, because that next school year calendar was quite, coming back quite early in August, so they wanted to push that start time back. So that was just another example of a time where the Board then asked for a change specifically.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Yes, Greg?
Assuming this motion passes, do you have an idea of what the timeline would be for, I don't know, if you want to call it like an ad hoc Calendar Committee, the interim Calendar Committee, or whatever? I mean, is this going to be something that, I mean, I know we're talking about a timeline more than a year out, but as you said, people plan around this, so I don't know. You know, do you anticipate this is something that we'll have to quickly canvas, parents and teachers and students and whatnot, like, and have Calendar Committee meet over the summer, or is this something that would be tackled, like, in the fall?
Yes, Dr. Gross?
If this was approved, my plan would be to reach out to the existing members of the Calendar Committee who created that calendar, invite them back early part of September. The students, some may have graduated, so we would need to find a replacement for those, or if there is someone who could not serve, we would find a replacement for those individuals, but we would do that as soon as the school year started, so that we can get out information, one, to the Board for your approval, and then, two, out for parents as soon as we could.
Madam President, may I say something?
Yes, please, Dr. Gandhi.
Just a quick search on looking at our area school districts as well, West Fargo and Moorhead. It is my understanding that our historical practice has always been to do calendars two years out, because Fargo Public Schools is often leading a lot and has a lot, large impact, but I do not believe that West Fargo Public Schools or Moorhead have an approved calendar for the 2425 school year at this time.
Okay, thank you. Yep, Greg?
So we may have a slightly, I don't want to say problematic, but like, maybe a little sticky of a situation with the, with the plan you just laid out, Dr. Gross, given that the negotiations process, while at impasse currently on some topics, did get support from the Board Committee to, I guess, place some stricter parameters on who would serve on that, so I don't, I don't, I guess maybe we'd have to look to our legal counsel to see what, like, what we would have to do for that, but I would anticipate the Board would honor that.
Yep, Dr. Gross?
So I certainly would take my lead from the Board. If the Board indicated that they would like a different group to come together, we'd certainly do that, but I would also like to invite as many members back that created that original calendar as possible, just to honor their work.
Yeah, that, so, so I, I think there's probably going to be a good way to do that, given the language that we, the Board and the FEA agreed upon with the, as, like, percentages or whatever, so I think there hopefully should still be an opportunity to invite back prior members, except maybe if a student graduated, that seems a little weird, but you could, you're probably still allowed to invite them, because they are presumably, you know, patrons of the district still.
Yes, Tara?
So as far as advice to the Board, my advice to the Board in this topic would be that I would encourage you to resume the Calendar Committee or vote in favor of this. Essentially, North Dakota Sentry Code dictates when school cannot be in session, and that includes all federal holidays, and so I would urge you as your legal counsel to vote in favor of reconvening the Calendar Committee to remove those holidays from session.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Yes?
Clarifying question, Tara, so Sentry Code says we should follow federal holidays, but we're not currently doing that, and so I'm going to vote in favor of this, but we haven't been following Sentry Code, is what I'm hearing, nor have probably most districts in North Dakota.
Yeah, so essentially, what Sentry Code says is any day declared to be a public holiday by the President of the United States, which would essentially be the public holidays. So my advice would be for calendars that we still have the option to modify, we should do that, which would include the 2425 calendar.
All right, any other discussion? All right, I think we're ready, Anne Marie.
Clark.
Yes.
Day.
Yes.
Gulickson.
Yes.
Holden.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Berklin.
Yes. All right, motion passes, and we will move on to Item Number C, the Fargo Public Schools' Philosophy, which came to you through memo number 13, from Nikki and Dr. Gandhi. Do you want to share some thoughts on?
Sure, thank you.
Background on the memo? Yep?
Yeah, you bet. The district has taken some time and assembled some philosophies that will help guide some of our decisions, it'll establish a clear framework for decision-making, daily operations, ensuring our approach to education is guided by a strong set of principles. This was brought to CEA, and it was asked that we take a look at it and see if this is something that the Board would be willing to adopt as well, as it is being presented by the district. And so we had a good conversation about it, and CEA had determined that they would like to bring it to the Board and make that recommendation to everybody. I hope they've had a chance to read it. We can sure entertain questions if you'd like, but coming out of the Communications, Engagement, and Advocacy Committee, we are making a recommendation that the Fargo Board of Education adopt the FPS policies included in memo 13, and that they be reaffirmed annually at the reorganization of the Fargo Board of Education, such as our land acknowledgement statement.
Great, thank you, Nikki. I would look to entertain a motion regarding the Fargo Public Schools' philosophy.
So reread my motion, I bet.
Yeah.
All right, so CEA recommends that the Fargo Board of Education adopt the FPS philosophies, included in memo 13, and that they be reaffirmed annually at the reorganization of the Fargo Board of Education.
Second.
Thanks. All right, we have a motion by Nikki and a second by Seth. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Greg?
One thing that I think I'd like to expand upon what Nikki said regarding the CEA Committee's consideration of this, is that these were, like, these aren't things that, these aren't the Board's philosophies, like, this isn't us saying, like, here's what our philosophies are. I think, you know, which is, I think, a pretty good thing, because, like, as a Board, we can have different philosophies that kind of impact a lot of things, but these were developed by, like, all the stakeholders outside of the group, though we got an email that, from Grant, before this meeting. Though, we got an email that, from Grant before this meeting, that indicated that the FEA did not provide feedback in one way or the other. But we, like, the process to develop these philosophies is something that I really appreciated from the district, because it is kind of a holistic view from a lot of different stakeholders. And I just wanted to point out that Nikki's motion was very intentionally and well-worded to say that, like, we're not really discussing the, like, any changes to the philosophies or anything like that. It's just like, hey, the district developed these philosophies, and the board should reaffirm them. So just wanted to bring that extra context.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Robin first?
So Greg, I appreciate those comments. What's the difference between adopt and, I mean, because if we adopted, are we putting it into our own policies? I think, I think that's a really good statement. Should we consider a different word? Because if we adopt it, where are we going to put it? Should we agree with? Should we, I'm not good at the wordsmithing there, but, and I appreciate your careful wording, but if we adopt it, where is it going to go? So thank you for bringing up that question. Hopefully, somebody has an opinion that can help me.
Well, I can take a shot at it. I think mostly it was intended for support, that the district is doing this and that we, as a board, support that.
And I would say too, right above the recommendation, it says if adopted, the FPS policies will be added to our website and shared with our staff and families at the start of the school year. So the website is where it would live. I don't know if there'd necessarily be an actual policy, per se, based upon what that says in the memo.
Thank you. And Namal?
Now, I think one of the reason why we, just like Nikki said, I think she said it beautifully, and I think I was one of those people who said, we need to look into it as a whole board, you know, to, to make sure that we all in the same, the same agreements, and just looking, looking at all the information for FPS philosophy together, you know, because it's good to have all of our input in it, so that way we can move forward, at least we know, you know, we did the right thing. And, and that's one of the reason why I said, you know, let's put it together, put it to the whole board, let's have a discussion on it, and then from there, we can agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, Robin?
So the word came to me, affirms.
Sure.
I mean, is that, is that clearer? And I hate to get into semantics here, but if we adopt policies, we're adopting them as a board, but I think we're affirming that we support the policies. I will vote in favor of it either way, but I'll shut up now.
So we, we could discuss maybe an amendment?
I don't actually know if that matters, though, right? Like, what word we use in that? Because it's going to live on the website in that we support them and they go out there. So does that one word in the actual motion have an impact on the document?
I would also just kind of mirror, the adoption of our land acknowledgement statement isn't an adoption of policy. It's something that the, that the CEA committee and the administration brought forward to the board, and it's not one of those things that lives in policy, but it's one of those things that is a philosophy that we, that we want to adhere to as a district. And when the board supports it publicly with a vote, it gives it more weight. So our, our land acknowledgement statement does not live anywhere than, really, at this point, on, on our agendas and all our, all our paper communications. And then, as we cited once a year, there's no policy. But we voted to adopt it because it, it puts more weight behind the idea. And I think that this is the same idea here, is that this is going to be something that we are going to help, it's going to help guide us as a district when we make decisions, and it's going to live in our website, and it's not a policy, but us adopting it as a board puts weight behind it.
Thank you for the explanation. That helps me process this.
Great, thanks, Seth. Any other comments? All right, Anne Marie, we're ready for a roll call.
Day?
Yes.
Golicson?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Berklin?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. Motion passes, and we will move right along to our board reports. And now I get to pick the order, which is kind of exciting. So I will, I will go, we'll start with you, Katie, if you have anything to report.
Actually, don't, since I was out of country for the majority of the time between our last two visits. So I don't have anything to report tonight, thank you.
I think we had some negotiation stuff. Like, it all really became a blur. Grant's probably sitting over there like, yes, we had negotiations. I, I think we had negotiations with the FEA one time since the last meeting. And I believe that is the only stuff I've really done, except, Jim, you'll be happy to know, I started emailing around to solicit stuff for the picnic, and I'm ready to supervise the grilling.
Thanks. All right, Nikki?
That's awesome, okay. We had CEA on June 27th, and then we did have two negotiations meetings, we had the committee and with the FEA on the 28th. And then with the holiday and the, in the middle of all of that, we didn't have a whole lot else, and here we are. So.
Jim?
Yeah, I attended the planning committee meeting, and I attended one of the negotiating committee meetings, and I think that was it since our last meeting.
Thanks, Robin.
Thank you. There was a meeting this morning for the chamber about housing, and the only reason I share that is, I, at this meeting is, it connects to my liaison appointment to the Community Development Committee for the City of Fargo. And that primarily is their purpose. And, and it was, it was great overview. If anybody wants any of the reports, please share that with me. And I would appreciate some direction in the future as to what the board wants for community and liaison and correspondence reports. If we are going to share everything we do in the community, save some time. But I would like some clarity. So I'm trying to connect my reports to what we actually are expected to report on, so something to think about.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Seth?
Yes, Greg is correct. We have had one negotiation session with the FEA on the 28th since we last met as a full board, and I believe that is, that is it over the past two weeks. So, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Namal?
Well, you'd have to be surprised what I did. Just kidding. I think I yelled all the time to myself, that's what I'm going to say, for the whole two weeks. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Newman?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thanks. And so I just attended one negotiations committee meeting and session, and then on Sunday, I spent the afternoon volunteering to paint the set for Trollwood. And I promise not to be insufferable about pointing out what I painted when we all go watch it together. But this is just a shout out to the community. Please go see Singing in the Rain at Trollwood. It's always a really remarkable performance, and we have amazing talent in our community, so it's really fun to go watch. And that's all I have. Okay, moving on to 11, I anticipate that Seth has some things to talk about.
Yes. I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy as permitted under North Dakota Century Code 44-04-19 dot 1 and 15 dot 1-16-22.
Second. Thank you. All right, we have a motion by Seth and a second by Nikki. Anne Marie, would you please call the roll?
Golicson?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Day?
Yes.
Berklin?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll stay here. Yeah, we'll stay here.
And we are adjourned, but please don't move. All right.
Well, technically she doesn't have to be at the meeting. But we'll give her a chance to be.
You're adding her.
Is it because?
Jackie is requesting to join, so the back room just needs to add her.
Okay.
We just need to verify that Rupak is there as well. Oh, yeah. Yep, okay. Can we verify if Jackie's on?
Yeah, we don't see Jackie connecting.
I see her connecting over here. Can I push this?
Do you see her on the list of possible candidates or on the checkmark?
Yes, Sam.
Okay, great. I'd like to call to order the, oh, yes, sorry.
It will be Tracy because she is the president.
Oh, gosh, I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will call to order this Fargo School District Building Authority Annual Meeting. It is July 11, 2023. And our first item this evening is election of the Board of Directors. The current Board of Directors are all of us, basically Melissa Berkland, Katie Christensen, Greg Clark, Name All Die, Nikki Golickson, Seth Holden, Jim Johnson, sorry, Robin Nelson, Tracy Newman, and then Dr. Gandhi and Jackie Gap. So we will look, Jim?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we nominate the current Board of Directors to serve for another year.
Second.
Thank you for that. Motion by Jim, seconded by Seth. Any discussion? Okay, Emery? Nope, okay. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mike.
I'd like to make a motion that we elect the following officers for the coming year for the district's building authority. For the office of President, Melissa. For the office of Vice President, Seth. For the office of Treasurer, Robin. And for Secretary, Jackie.
Second.
Thank you for that. Another motion on the floor. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, and then we'll go on to do approval of minutes of the regular meeting. This was from July 12 of 2022. Do people get a chance to review those? Need a second?
Robin?
I, okay. Are you in charge now?
I guess I am now. No.
Oh, we switch.
Well, that's. Okay. All right, so item number four, approval of the minutes from the July 12, 2022 meeting.
I move approval of the minutes of July 12, 2022.
Thank you. Second. All right, motion by Robin, seconded by Nikki. All in favor of approval of the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, next we will move on to adopt the budget for 2324. Jim?
Yes, I'd like to move that we adopt the budget as provided in our packet for fiscal year 2024, showing revenues of $303,510 and expenditures of $303,510 for a balanced budget.
Second.
All right, motion by Jim, seconded by Robin. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, or do we need to do a roll call vote for this one? Okay, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying yes.
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 Okay. Next, item number six, establish lease payments for the Fargo Board of Education for lease revenue refunding bonds, Series 2017. I look to Jim for a motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we establish the lease payment for Fargo Board of Education for the lease refund revenue bond for Series 2017. And please note, this will be the final payment of that bond.
Second.
All right, motion by Jim, seconded by Seth. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 All right, thank you. Motion passes. And with that, that concludes our Building Authority meeting. Thank you.
You're supposed to say, "I'll see you all next year."